I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, from the nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Ah, we're going to review and approve the agenda. Any changes or anything anybody would like to add?
You might put Josh as a guest instead of thinking of waiting here for two hours.
Yes, okay. Yep, okay. Will that change your mind?
I'll make a motion to approve for that, Judge.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Review, December 10th meeting. Any additions, corrections? Anyone saw?
Motion to approve the December 10th regular meeting minutes.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
And December 20th?
To approve the December 20th minutes.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Open public comment. And so, I guess you've got the floor.
Well, I came...
To get you out of here.
Okay, came before the board to let them know of a couple changes at our December annual meeting. It's our election year for officers. We have three new officers for this year. I will be staying as chief. Patrick Banks will be our new assistant chief. Jason Bates will be our new captain. And Sandor Vida will be our new lieutenant. And then we have a second secretary treasurer assistant, which will be Joe Bernor, to assist John and learn the role of what the secretary treasurer does. And I'm looking for the board to approve the new slate of officers. Those will take a January 1st effect for 2019 and 2020. And in 2020, we will vote again for officers.
Anybody have any questions with Josh or? Motion to approve the new officers for the fire department.
I'll make a motion to approve the officers.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for the question.
Yes, thank you.
No, Josh, definitely. Thank you.
Yes.
Have a good evening.
You too. Thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, under public comment, I had a comment. Last meeting, the individuals are here for real rotten or whatever that particular slogan is. And I was wondering if anyone on the board had actually gone on and looked at the website.
I actually did.
I know.
Yeah. I don't know if you knew that the people who created that are gone.
Oh, I read the paper. I'm aware. But they didn't say that when they were here.
No, they didn't.
And that doesn't have anything to do with how Proctor's represented on the website. And I felt like when you went on the website and looked at it, it was very different from how they represented it while they were here that evening. And I think it would be who of you go on and take a key into it, since you have voted to include money again in this budget. And I don't know where that line item is in the budget, but it's not under social services. It's under some other line in the budget. I'm not advertising something, I'm not sure. But we supported it last year. And it's in the budget again this year. And I think if they're going to be representing your community and you're supporting them, it should be representing us to the best of our ability and in a positive light. And the essence of how we're represented is that we are the marble capital. And there are two pictures in the marble museum and one in the fire department. And we've talked about things here before. And I know even in the smaller community committee meetings. And while we're here and sat here and have multiple benefits because of marble from Proctor, I don't know that marble is our path forward. And I guess I take that from this board and from others that have come and spoke and from the smaller community groups, that we certainly have other things to offer than the fact that we were many, many years ago the marble capital of the world. Probably not a distinction you can even hold today. So, I would certainly like to see that addressed. And, you know, have a different slogan, a slogan maybe that, you know, even if our slogan was something, live, work, and a nice place to commute from, you know, that's not the worst thing to be, a lovely commuter, commuter, community, and have all of those aspects of the community that benefit us. So, I guess I was really disappointed when I went on and looked at the website and saw how Proctor was being represented.
Did we pass that already, that funding for them?
You put it last year's budget.
Right, but we didn't approve it this year.
It's on the table tonight.
Right, okay.
For the budget, but right. Yes, it's not essential to put it in this issue with news like the leak, like the Tabor covers, like the other developer, just listed in that area.
Yeah, I kind of agree. I mean, historically, that's what built us and that's what made Proctor what it is, is the marble industry. But we've moved on extremely far from there. And it would have been nice... I kind of felt the same with all, a lot of the towns, actually, that it was very generic. It's kind of what the towns were and what they thought of, but not what they really are today. So, I don't know if they've really interviewed people in town.
I don't know.
I have no idea.
Take a look and see what the site has. Okay. I guess any good stuff? Other than they're going to start making ice at the work. Hopefully, they'll have a more success this time.
But I think it was nice that they opened up, even though they didn't have ice.
They, that was great, yes.
That was very nice.
I go over there and spend some time. Especially on vacation, yes. And the Astralons in town tonight, varsity boys game, so we'll keep our fingers crossed.
If you get over with it really quickly, you can go to the game.
Yeah, well, Paulie's over there. She'll call me at halftime.
Okay. Highway department.
Okay, you have the packet, the highway report. One of the big things on there is the first book is our map that the regional planning did for us under a grant that we received over a year ago and got us completely identified all of the areas where there was suspect that we might have had erosion from streams running into the creek. They did not find anything serious. We are in compliance with the permit requirements, as they are right now. There's some projects that we might want to consider that they found. But basically, we have nothing that we have to do in the next three years or in the next 20 years to be our general burden. So... And a big issue, a big reason is that we get paid gross.
That was brought up at that seminar we went to. They're cracking down on a lot of rural towns, class four unmaintained roads. They're going to be forced...
For water, is that what it's for?
Yeah. They're going to be forced to start maintaining some of their class four roads. So, we're fortunate that we don't have many.
We have one little piece of class four, which is the intersection. It goes out past the last house. I think that's the only class four we have.
Excellent.
Anyway, the good news is that we need all the permit requirements. There's nothing we have to do. We still have to pay the fee every year to keep our permit. If anybody wants to look at the maps, they can there on city over here. Firewood, we're still cutting and splitting. We did buy a couple cords just to make sure that we had some already split to get us through the cold weather, but we really got some more. Ray Beatt was here this last week. He's marked, they're going to mark about five more trees on Gorham Ridge Road. And one of them is a big good elk. So, that's what it is. And as part of that, that's Josh's project for this winter, as soon as he's got a full crew, is to go through Gorham Ridge Road and take all the brush back to the right away line. And cut these trees that Ray has picked out.
Now, did you have a chance to speak with Pittsburgh about that chipper?
No, I haven't.
Okay.
All I know is that the guys up there don't like the new chipper they got.
Right. But since we don't have one at all, I don't...
You know, it's kind of hard for me to justify a chipper that you use three weeks out of the year. When you can probably rent one from one of the...
Tree the Valley.
Tree people. Or the other thing is you cut it, leave it side of the road, they can either do it or chip it out for you. At the disposal. So, it's, you know, I don't know what the price is, whether it's a five or six or $10,000 item. But it doesn't get a lot of use.
All right. Good information.
North Street River Bridge, we brought that up. The TRS has put down a steel plate. They come back and put asphalt around the edges of it because I was concerned that people are going to catch that thing with a plow. But now they got it pretty smooth. There was some ice rubbing down the edge of the pavement. Like Wilson Castle, the barn area, this culvert was blocked up. So, it wasn't going under the driveway. It was going out of the road. And it's in this situation where many towns with gravel roads would have what they call a greater burden. As it builds up, the sod builds up on the end and the water runs down the road. We've got work on our pavement. It's not washing off the road. But it is once the water gets out of the road, it will not go back into the ditch because we need to do it. So, we have a situation where we need to clean some areas up that are similar to this. But right now, we've got it cleaned out so that it does flow down the ditch. Had to replace the block heater on the loader. And continually servicing and cleaning equipment as we go. Ice and snow, we had six events. We had three hours of overtime. Putting job on payroll as salary. It's kind of overtime. It's very aggressive. What I have said to the job note is, don't take it all yourself. You'll spread it out between the other people. But other people feel like they are getting some overtime out of it. And also, you don't have to be the owner of the road. I mean, it's easy for him. He goes across the truck. He's got asphalt on it. He goes, takes a look at what's going on. So, that's the reason that our overtime is down even though we've got a number of events. Toolcat is to roof repair. And of course, they use that roof to do the park, the rake. When we brush the snow off, if we ever get snow and we ever get ice, roof business. Service the wood furnace, you can see that is a monthly activity, or a weekly activity, is to clean it out and keep it ready. And with the rain we had, they were clearing out drains to catch basins so that the water wouldn't storm drains and not down the street. Flowering and salting, spitting wood and the brush cutting brush. That's a new wood that John got me today. And I could cross off the culvert roadway, well, I could cross off harvest. We still have the roadway surface that they also evaluate to grow. And three hours of overtime. All board will be starting on January 2nd. He signed his letter, accepted an offer of permission. He is scheduled for a drug test tomorrow morning or tomorrow afternoon. It's going to be a CDL physical and a medical check. So, we should have it cleaned up by next Wednesday.
And then your packets, the blocks for the salt check. And you can see the breakdown of the cost on that. Let's say they had 13 truckloads.
I talked with both Iowa and Carrera. And Iowa, again, it's the spending for the out. It's the spent, the first bad gave us a simple, a first operated PSI car three and a continuous four. I mean, no joints or breaks in it. Both of them said this is a special one. They're going to be precasting it if they just do it. And that's why the cost is what it is. What I gave you is changing the numbers, both the asphalt and the blocks from what we estimated back in September to what we have now. Significant increase of $30,000. The question is, how do we trade for it? Since we only have 73,000, because the salt shed fund. We do have a cumulative highway surplus carryover in July of 2018. I did give you a copy of the page from the report. It shows 160,000 there. It is there. If we use that to bank up the difference, we still have $59,000 left in this cumulative surplus. I was really looking for other places to spend that. But right now, the salt shed is the issue we're looking at.
Is Carrera, have you contacted Carr again? Would they be interested in?
I contacted them. They'd be the same. His term was expensive. He didn't give me a price as to what it would be. Expensive. The difference between two of them, the shipping costs, Bruce said, they got 13 loads of covered down. Trucking is going to be 5,400 out of that 27. Carrera is going to still be willing. Sorry, it's culture, but, you know, the difference in price. I did not get a current lock price from Carrera. Because Iowa did it. Is it, I assume it's going to be noted to be the same. Carrera said it was expensive. We couldn't get a price from them as to what they would look for.
So, is this...
I just wanted to let you know and also to have the board accept the fact that we are using the surplus parts to build the shed. I've been using them before, but I've got to the same magnitude that we are now.
So, on this sheet here, is this what it was estimated at at one point? And this is what it ended up being? Is that unconfused?
Yes.
Why the difference?
This was the estimate that I brought to the board back in September with the idea that we go ahead with the $144,000 project, which has now turned out to be $174,000.
So, why the increase?
The increase is the...
The cost of the blocks?
The blocks and the asphalt. The asphalt I had estimated at 20,000, it came here at 35,000. And the blocks I had estimated, using a $85 price, came here at 200 and something. And the reason for it was what the prices they were quoting us back then was for waste blocks, which they would not guarantee would be the strength requirement. Or that would quite not be forward as a signal unit. Because they were taking whatever was coming out of the trucks or it comes in.
And why the change for the asphalt?
The change for the asphalt is I used the $80 a ton price, which is what we had for regular paving, for a class two. And when Pike or Will, the owner, was a bit it, came here and said, this is not highway paving. This is strip paving. You got three layers. You're going to put it down in twelve white strips and you build up eight inches of it. The volume was the same, the price per unit was the difference. And I'll admit that it was, you know, my error back then as far as pricing both of these items. But I spent more time looking at it. I write it in different numbers.
Well, we're kind of committed here.
Yes. And if we don't put in those blocks that way, then the rest of the building is not going to, they're not going to work yet.
Would you mind calling Carreras and talking to them?
Yeah.
It'll be...
Just to get a price and see what it would be.
Yes. If you wouldn't mind.
Because I said, when I talk to them, I got the trucking price, but I didn't get the, what the block price would be. Their normal block price is, is 80, 85. Iowa's normal block price is $70. Is that safe, in the same range, for the higher look? I'm not sure. Although, he used the word expensive, and I didn't bother to ask him after that. I do, it's the same ballpark.
I don't want to wait till we get a price from...
If I get a price from Carrera, which is less than what I've got from Rarburg, do we proceed ahead with Carrera?
Rather than wait for another meeting and whatever.
Yeah, that's last.
I would go along with that.
I'd like to see what the price was. But the other thing that I don't love is the, anything after a half hour is charged at $105 now for offloading. I mean, if they can't figure out how much time they're going to have to take to offload.
We have to offload it, of course.
Yeah, we're the ones that are...
Yeah, they're...
Offloading.
Oh, I see, okay.
They're coming with...
So, it's going to be 13 loads of 130 plus or minus blocks. This is a 10-hour truck. I think we can take 10 blocks off in a half an hour.
Yeah, as long as we're not pulling the foot or, you know...
As long as they don't, that's one thing to judge, that make sure that they don't care about that.
Yeah.
13 trucks, why is that the game?
Yeah, because they aren't that busy this time of year. They could do that. And the other thing is they need to show up in our normal workday. You know, they can't roll in here 6 o'clock at night or midnight.
Yeah, I think...
But as long as you're aware and you'll proceed, the price that we got.
Yeah, if we have to, we have to.
Yeah, why don't we make a motion so it's clear?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that if Stan checks with Carrera and they come in and they tell the price, then we don't need to revisit it. We can approve it as the...
Second.
Second?
Oh, yeah, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we met this afternoon regarding the North Street River Bridge water proposals. And then we had the sheet that was on the table. And then the numbers came out the same for Dufran and King and Dufran. And we batted out around and thought we probably were going to be, might be better off with Dufran. Any questions or what we individually did, did numbers on...
I guess what's your reasoning for going with Dufran versus Dufran King?
They, in the proposals, they have done some recent jobs that were almost identical to what we're doing. They did some work for us on the bike path and what have you, so...
So, this rating system, are these people who are rating each of these?
That's Bruce I and Chris G. James. It was the committee, less job because Joe didn't get his numbers.
Okay.
And he had a 1, 2, 3, 4, but he didn't have the numbers out. So, that's it for the numbers.
We spent probably an hour and a half or so on that, just going through each one of the proposals and... I thought this was...
The big step is to send it to the state's approval. So, if you move to...
They, you know, accept this...
Dufran group.
Yeah, Dufran group.
And submit to approval.
Yes, and the state reimburses. State's going to cover the cost of it and what have you, so...
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve going with Dufran.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to go into the Board of Water Commissioners.
Move to go into the Board of Water Commissioners.
Second.
Second? You have that?
Yes.
All in favor? Do you have anything?
The only thing is that we've had a couple requests to find shut offs. One, we haven't been able to find on 34 Bledsoe Street. They were going to be checking, going to get tomorrow to see if they could trace the lines. There's a concern that we may have three houses hooked onto a single service. The house is being re modeled and being put back in with a couple of vines. And you've got to move into it, so... This is Ryder's?
Oh, yeah.
Because they stripped out all the old piping that was in there, so... But they're going to feed what they covered tomorrow to see if they can hook on their equipment and the water line inside the house and electronically trace to see where it goes to. And the graph that's been quiet on the water there, which isn't too bad, hard to take.
No, not this time of year.
Have they had time to locate any shut offs on the list?
They haven't moved our various ones on the list. I didn't, I took the list off the agenda because it's the same list that I gave you at the last meeting as far as the status of it. And we are not, haven't cut any of them. Part of this spending, you know, having people available.
But I think we did agree that we were going to...
Contract out.
Right. If we had some days that was going to work.
Yes, and they would try and locate those.
Yeah.
With the machine before we at least keep moving forward on this.
Well, just, yeah, at least it's covered at the last. I checked both lists to be able to say, with the exception of the college, we'll take it all. Have they ever reorganized? Because I did a quick sort by dollar value when I did the columns.
If we could still get that list, each meeting, if we could still get that list, just so we can save a phrase for it.
Okay, the same list as I had in the last meeting.
I understand.
You are pretty to put it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
But it shouldn't be the same list at any meeting, should it? Because people should be paying.
People, we've got two people in tons of pay, since the, the numbers might be changed, but, but the same people are on the list and the same surface here.
But, but that's my point, is that I wanna see if people are paying or not.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, especially if they aren't, uh, keeping up with the.
With the agreement.
Yes.
Okay, motion to go into Board of Sewer Commissioners.
I'll make a motion to go to the Sewer Commission.
Second then.
Okay, all of the favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, we don't have anything for, from Simon's, uh?
No, that's both.
No, and, uh, you have, uh, the tree trimming paperwork in the packet?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Any questions on that?
Little prices are very similar.
Yeah.
I, I did notice Valencourt's, uh, put right in their estimate here, um, do not, you know, stone wall.
Yeah.
And trees did. I just hope both contractors have been made aware that there are issues up there.
They have, yeah, we had the, uh, pre, uh, in meetings, everybody walked up and down the whole lane and, uh, explaining what the situation was.
Good.
Oh, this, uh, this has been approved by the state, so.
Yes.
Yes, we're ready to go.
Just a double check, I would hope, uh, you or John could drive by, stop when they are working up there to make sure.
I will let the property owner know.
Right.
Try to catch up with Ray Page to do, mark the corners, to relocate the corners, the empty pack, yeah.
Ray Page.
He's the survey consultant from Rarburg. He's done most of the work at Rarburg over the last few years.
You know, as far as I know, this is basically the last thing up there, other than repaving next summer, so, just wanna get out of there clean, without a lot of drama.
Yeah, but I, I will be there when they start, and I will let the property owner know before anybody does anything.
Super, yeah, thank you.
Was trees inked the ones we had last year?
Trees, yeah, like, we've had, trees has been a little bitter for our projects for the last three years.
Yeah.
But weren't they the one that charged us that outrageous amount for the tree ancestry?
What's that?
I don't remember that.
Remember we had all these trees removed for like, I don't know, X amount, and then they took one tree down in front of Mrs. Lotolla's house and charged us like ten thousand dollars?
Four thousand dollars. That was, that was, that was, that was an extra after the bid.
That's what?
That was an extra tree that was not.
Beyond, right, okay, I was just, just remembering.
That's why it was a separate wire item.
Okay.
And trees split it out because we're covering the, uh, payment on the, uh, the eleven twenty-five. Those are, uh, trees in the right of way that are dead.
Okay.
So actually, uh, we're gonna get reimbursed from the state, um, that's gonna roll into that for the fourteen fifty.
Thank you.
The other item is that the sewer service line from the town office is crushed, and it's crushed underneath the wall, out crooked. John will be digging next Wednesday, it's still operating, but when I was shoveling snow, I noticed that there was a sinkhole. It was right over the top of where the pipe goes through. So that, uh, they TV'd it today, they cleaned it out so that, uh, it's running right now, but it's broken pipe and it should, it wouldn't take much to have it clogged up again. So next Wednesday, they will be digging in front of, in front of the office building to repair the line. And we had a broken line four years ago, but we repaved the, the apron, and we fortunately put a clean out here outside so that they could clean, so that that's where they were operating today, rather than hauling it inside the building, and that's all over everywhere. So the question is, you know, they're gonna do a repair and get out of there at some point in time, we're probably doing the front wall is to replace that whole sewer, sewer service line all the way through, always tore up.
And the Alphardt Water Sewer Commission.
So just a clarification, you said eleven twenty-five, the town was paying for, and the fourteen fifty were being reimbursed, are they just being rolled into the bond?
Yeah, they're rolled into the.
So that's not reimbursed, that's just put into the bond that weren't defined payment until later?
Yep.
Okay, motion to go back to the regular select board.
So moved, second.
All of the favor?
Aye.
Uh, Park and Rick, Jerry, you got?
We haven't had any meetings.
Well, sure. We haven't had anything in the Personnel Committee and deeper pod.
We're not meeting again till spring, so we can actually take that off, I would think, if you want, until.
Yeah, they had it next, March, April.
Yeah, yeah, that would be good.
Uh, Town Office Committee, uh, I don't believe there's anything going on in that, other than.
The architects were over measured up the whole downstairs, doing actual measurements, and are, we expect to have a proposal for, at Clarkus, and what they suggest we do to remodel the downstairs.
Uh, Planning Commission?
We usually meet the end of the month, so we moved it to the beginning of January, we haven't met yet.
Okay. And Fire Department, Bob's not here, Josh didn't mention anything. Regional Solid Waste, uh, I was, had two meetings that night, and I couldn't get to the solid waste ones. Regional Transportation, uh, it was, uh, just a kind of, uh, going over, there's, we have a new person that's, uh, heading up that, that's just come on staff with, with the, uh, Regional Planning Commission, so, uh, it really wasn't an awful lot accomplished at that particular meeting, but, uh, we'll, I expect that we'll be meeting, uh, in January. On Regional Planning, that?
No meeting in December, so we'll be meeting in January.
And then, probably the same for the market. Okay. Uh, okay, Proctors Future, I don't think there's anything.
They were here last week, they still have, no, Regal was here, yeah.
Yeah, okay, uh, everybody signed the orders, nothing with regard to the auditors, which, uh, and any graphics, we have the tax stabilization. After, so. Anything you can add on that, Tom?
Uh, this is new to everyone, so I'm gonna go with what the lawyers suggest. The only thing, um, and, I get a little lost in some of the wording here, but, um, the only rebate they can get is on the town tax.
Yes.
Not the school tax.
Correct.
The state doesn't allow that, so I, I just hope they're clear on that, but, uh.
What I would do is, if there's no objection to it at this meeting, I would send it to the Curtises for their review. But I didn't wanna send it to them until you had a chance to look at it.
Yeah, it's just, just what we.
I did send it there with the, with the front cover that they took a look at it, and were satisfied that, that the conditions.
Yep.
So my action, we'd send it to the Curtises unless it's.
I'd like to make a motion, we send this to the Curtises, let them review it and wait for their approval.
I'll second it.
Uh, all of the favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I'm gonna abstain, just a good.
As, as a side note, uh, Jessica did call me today, uh, to let me know that they have a dump truck for sale. They have four fifty with a plow, and a whole bunch of other stuff, if anybody's interested by a, a plow truck.
Well, speaking of needing a dump truck.
I'm gonna continue to abstain.
It's a two thousand fourteen, and they're asking price is forty-seven thousand dollars. Then I wonder, we'll buy this fifty-some thousand, it's, it's gonna be an eighteen or nineteen before we get it.
Yeah, it'll be, have a, a wing and.
Well, yeah, it's, it's, it's one step up also.
Yeah, it's more heavy duty.
Five fifty instead of the four fifty.
Yeah, but maybe we could talk about this later on.
But I don't, I mean, is it something that would replace the Chevy that we got, I'm not sure, but it's, it seems to be a pretty steep price for what's there. Does have a stainless steel body, does have the plow, does it?
Maybe you could negotiate a little better price?
Well, if, if the Chevy breaks down in the next two weeks, I will be knocking your under your door.
That, that one ton Chevy seems to be on the road a lot, ours.
It, it, see, it's got the bigger, uh, salt box there.
Yes.
So it's.
Yeah, but I mean, even, even in the summertime, it seems to be on the road a lot.
Because it's a dump lot here.
Well, yeah, but it's small and handy, you know, uh, for some reason, it seems to be popular with the crew.
Okay, we took care of the Fur Department Officers, uh, the front wall, if you wanna collaborate on, or add anything to the information we have here, we've got the, the twenty thousand dollar historic reservation money towards that, um.
I would, you know, accept the grant, yeah, authorize me to decide to send it back, it's gotta do even by a certain age. It's got a whole bunch of conditions, but the conditions are reasonable. Cause I can check them all off. I did include, give the packet, uh, the estimate that we had from MBF, which was seventy-one thousand. We have fifty-three thousand dollars, fifty town office buildings for, uh, we have a twenty thousand dollar grant here, so that gives us seventy-three thousand dollars. So if, if the bids career had the estimate, then we're there, what I would like to suggest is that we come out for a bid immediately. Once I get the clear up on the paperwork for the grant, uh, hopefully to get, receive bids before, uh, January thirtieth. If there is a discrepancy, if we need more money, I would propose that we apply for a proctor, for the proctor trust grant for the balance. So the timing is right, is if we get out, we get the bids, they will go, here's the grant, here's our front, and here's the bids. If we need some more money, we would be looking for the proctor trust to, to make it up. That application goes through to the thirtieth, and usually we hear back whether or not they're sold, so. What I would do was make all the bid documents that they would have to hold their bid for sixty days, which I don't think is any problem, because I don't see how they're working in the winter time anyway.
Good idea, yes.
Yeah.
If we can get it out, get it on the street, I don't know what it's gonna cost to get it through the year.
We were, according to the paperwork, we were lucky to get twenty thousand out of this, cause.
Yes.
A lot of people applying.
That's, that's the maximum grant, it's twenty thousand for historic reservation.
Yeah.
If they're interested in work on up the street, uh, before we got the letter, I'll go ahead, one car truck could come and ask me about it.
Hey, great, they're looking for work, I guess.
Yeah.
That's super.
Um, probably, you want a motion on that?
Yeah, motion to accept the grant.
Grant, and, uh.
I'll make a motion to accept the grant.
Grant?
Second.
All of the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we'll go with the timeframe and the standard we talked about, and maybe we'll, uh, we'll win out on this dollar wise with the right bid, so. Okay, Jump Vehicle Ordinance.
I put the whole bunch of responses in there to address the ones that we got on our list. Uh, thirty-five Williams Street, car has been registered, uh, here's new ordinance, which will take place, take effect in sixty days, says registered and inspected, but registered is all it says today. Twenty East Street, uh, no, uh, registration, could forebe that he does, does have a large target when we try to get the vehicle covered.
It's covered, but it's still in plain view.
Well, it's, it is screened, I heard this talks about screening. So you can't see the vehicle, you see the cover there.
Yeah, cause it's, it's still right there.
A loophole, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Fifty-Gore Bridge Road, uh, does not appear to be the town orders for junk motor vehicle as desired, as a discarded, dissemled wreck scrapped or ruined, ruined vehicle apart, they wrote.
It says it does appear.
As it does appear, yes. Try to get it taken care of soon, so. The question is whether we sent them a violation letter, just so they put it on the book and put it on a thirty day calendar.
Those are the same ones who have the other car, right, that they put the, then I, we definitely need to do something, cause they just covered that one, and then they put another junk car, that's even worse.
I agree.
And it's.
Yeah, motion would be a final violation of our ordinance.
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Thirty day notice.
Okay, I'll make a motion, final violation.
All of the favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, okay.
There, there, we've got the latest work, which is Barket Street. And if you don't, if the.
And I drove by there, but the tan Toyota is gone. But the red Focus is still there.
Now, he's talking about trying to get it a, a battered vehicle, which I'm not sure what the statute is, but I suppose you can't touch somebody else's car unless he declares a battered.
So that probably covers everything here for the moment, anyone?
Do we wanna give him a little more time, or do we wanna?
So he's claiming that someone just left it there?
It's been there for a long time.
So he's trying to get this.
I know who, who belongs to.
We, we consider a notice of violation of the red vehicle.
I'm, I'm talking about the tan one.
Oh, the tan one's gone.
The tan one's gone, the red one, oh, okay.
The red one's still there.
I think I might know those, though. I mean, I think it should be, that's been there a long time.
It's been there.
That would give him thirty days to get it out, yeah.
Yeah, if you can't get it strung out with it, cause he already had, how many days?
Well.
I said, this one.
December twenty, yeah, but he's been working on, yes, let's do that.
Or just wait until the next vehicle's from here, Jerry, or you see if it's still there.
Yeah, I suppose we can't really, doing an awful lot since this was.
So he, he doesn't know who the red one is?
That's what he's saying.
That's the one up in the upper parking lot.
Yeah, there's trees growing up around it.
That's been abandoned one.
Why does the ordinance say about that?
Excuse me?
What does the ordinance say?
The lawyer?
The ordinance.
Or, I don't know who the lawyer is.
No.
But the ordinance, the ordinance would basically fine him, fine him.
Yeah.
Set a property.
He's definitely in the car.
And then you have to move in.
So I make a motion to find that vehicle in violation.
Send your letter, correct?
Yeah.
I'll turn my hearing aid up, please. I got new hearing aids, I'm a crazy.
Sit in this chair, please.
Letter, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so, motion to act on the, for the Ford Focus on that street.
You just made a motion, a seconded?
Yeah, I made a motion.
All who are in favor?
Aye.
Budget reports, uh, the audit, I was gonna ask, do you want to have the auditors cover the week with the select board and so forth? We did, uh, last year, we did a couple years ago. Can I answer any questions you've got?
I don't have any questions, and, and, you know, you went over it.
Cost thirteen hundred bucks to have the last one.
Yeah.
If you have any specific questions, I can...
And you said the, the things they suggested were what they suggested last few years, so.
Last year, yeah.
And there's nothing in my home, I think.
No, there's nothing that, really putting up a, a real bad...
See, and I had talked to, is that we are gonna propose that we do a ground assessor. Just to clear out ourselves, this is self-serving for our, for ourselves.
Absolutely.
And also, we got the, uh, policy, bookkeeping policy that we have a draft of, and it may be in other words, if you're trying to pick off a couple of things. Oh, the other one is the cemetery. Cemetery restricted funds and the other way, that are restricted, has proved to the auditors that they're not, that they're not restricted. You have proven that, and we're ready for it. I think if I work with the cemetery commission, we can make that happen, get that removed for this.
The budget report was supposed to be in, in, uh, in color to show, but you can see that, um, the empty cartridge downstairs drives, so they said, hey, let's just bring it and have it. President, wait, so. Any questions on anything, uh, on that budget?
What I will be doing for the town report is I will be, uh, putting out a report which shows the budget, the first six months, expend, actual expenditures, standardized by projection as to what I think the end of the year is gonna be. So that will point out if we are overspending someplace, or if I think there's a big expense that may be coming up that we didn't anticipate when we wrote the budget a year ago. But that's, as a report, that's gonna be the town reports, and I will have that one for your, for your next meeting, as I put stuff together.
Sheriff's Department, should any question on that paperwork? Forty active, three thousand, three hundred and two dollars, they're applying, so...
Officer Carter is very active. That's good.
There was a... It's brightest stop.
There was a state trooper, had a car pulled over on East Street Hill there, just as I was coming in.
Oh, sure.
It's nice to see the state takes an interest too.
I see them a lot.
They're, they're on their way home, they're gonna get some action.
Yeah, they might have been coming from the academy or something, possibly, or whoever.
Well, they patrol, they, they'll patrol, they pick up here too, right?
Yeah, if they were there, they, they see someone speeding, they will stop. Or whatever you like.
And they cover for us if we don't have anybody on.
If there's, if there's...
If it's an emergency.
Emergency.
Right, but if we don't have a sheriff on duty, we call the state police.
You call Red One Water, the dispatch unit, and they'll send it to the sheriff, or send it to the state police.
Oh, they do, they send it to sheriff?
Well, if the sheriff's on duty, they'll send it to the sheriff.
Right, but I'm saying when they're off duty. Like, sometimes they're off duty at two o'clock in the afternoon. So if something happens at three, they call state police.
Yeah, they, well, the dispatcher will have who to call.
Right.
Whatever the target is.
Somebody asked me that today, so I'll just...
Anything to our own business?
The, uh, dump truck, I didn't realize, I knew dump truck that's on order. I was under the impression we're gonna have it, uh, in the first quarter coming up, but, uh, we haven't even gotten a date as to, they give you a date, the manufacturer, it should be going down the assembly line in February second. We haven't even gotten that yet from them. So, I, I didn't think getting the cab and chassis was gonna be a big deal, but...
I didn't think, but, you know, I thought the body was the longer...
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah. But, uh, Jarvis brought some checking, uh...
Yeah, Jarvis checked with both the, he's also checked with, uh, Ford. And Ford could get whatever you ask them, because they get order read, it's just the way that, what we, what we spec for a vehicle, they're not making a transmission, but the company who makes the transmission, I presume it gets enough orders, then they will go into production.
And the other thing is the, uh, the discount that municipalities get. So if there's one on a dealer's lot, that throws that municipal discount out.
Are you special ordering to get the discount?
Yeah, basically. So you can't just pick one off the lot that somebody has, because you're, you're not gonna get the benefit of that municipal discount.
How much is it?
Five thousand so good.
Well, I, you know, I, uh, I don't think we should be special ordering, uh, parts that are so hard to come by. I mean, you know, it's a dump truck.
We put it out for bid, we had the, the two bids, we selected the lower...
Well, yeah, but it was specked out with special parts.
Well, it's specked out with what we should have for a vehicle. It's not a stock standard off, off the rack, uh, five fifty or fifty-five hundred. We got a transmission that we were, most of the other things are standard that we put into the spec, but some of the things are particular.
Okay, um, I, I just hate to see us, you know, dump, keep dumping money into the Chevrolet, you know, because it will be worked hard this winter. It seems to be the popular truck.
But it's, yeah.
I were waiting for this.
Someday we will get another one, someday we will have a new truck. We, we're gonna make do with what we got until then.
Yeah, I just hope it doesn't cost us a lot in the meantime, because, you know, we went through this a few years ago, keeping an old truck on the road. And it was expensive, so. All right?
Okay.
What, what about the Better Connections Grant? That's fallen off the table.
What's that?
The Better Connections Grant, we talked about that about three meetings, and then you were gonna arrange a meeting, and I never received an email, did that ever happen?
I thought I reached the last number. I was informed by Richard or Moore, is that you can't get a planning grant and a Better Connection grant in the same year. We've already accepted the planning grant to redo the tower plan. And so we didn't qualify. He did send me a link to a, uh, Department of Agriculture rural development site, which has a grant program later this spring. I have not looked at the link yet, as to whether something we go after. But the reason is that we don't qualify for the Better Connection.
Well, that, that must have been discussed at a special meeting, because at the last meeting, you were going to arrange a meeting with the state, so...
Yeah, I think it was at a special meeting.
Yeah, I, I was pushing the meeting was the same. I thought I said something, I thought I was being here. Didn't get it.
And, uh, we have some budget categories on the table, and, uh, if you haven't had a chance to talk with us, there are problems, I think we have a topic, have a meeting, uh, next week to, uh, work on budgets.
I would like to see a special meeting so we can focus on, that's a good idea.
Yeah. Why do you think it's gonna be a night? Do you, you don't wanna meet on Tuesday?
Did you bring champagne?
Yeah.
I would say Wednesday or Thursday, it's fine.
Either night's fine, we'll meet, either one.
You have a problem with either night?
Uh, either, either register would be.
Uh, Bob will be back.
I was gonna say, once Bob's back.
So, he should be back by then.
If he's ever back on Wednesday, do you...
First day?
Yeah.
He's coming back on second, right?
Probably, but it would be Wednesday, right?
Tuesday, right?
No, Tuesday's the first.
Is Wednesday?
Wednesday's the second.
Wednesday's the second.
Yeah, so Thursday?
Third, that?
It's fine.
Same, uh, same time?
Six, two, seven?
Sure.
Six, okay.
That's next Thursday.
Yeah.
What date is that?
The third.
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 Three, twenty nineteen. That's scary. I'll, I'll write that wrong first.
We'll have to process the basic changes of all the insurance, since we've got that policy here for the departments that have those. Um, general insurance is in here, and I've got a couple of changes, the department's got a couple changes they want to make. And I will have a summary for you, try to kick it out before the first of June, so that you can have it before Monday, before Tuesday. Then you got a couple days to look at it. But it will, it will have the bottom line, these numbers out.
That'd be great.
And then, and there's nothing exciting, is what you did here, I gotta change all the electric estimates, they're going up to, what, five point four percent?
Yeah, does that include, is it, that's the residential refit, is the commercial municipal going up?
I haven't heard any of those yet.
Haven't.
I did put the fifteen thousand for mosquitoes in the park budget, so you'll see that one is in there, which we voted last year. And the sixty-seven thousand for library and fifty other commitments, that's a value that's voted off. But we've been curious if civic was gonna be passed, and we can estimate what the tax rate would be.
It usually passes.
Uh, we've been discussing with the school district, uh, what their plans are for the tower meeting, and where they got that today was, they would hope to have a presentation of the budget during our tower meeting portion. Uh, it's not a school meeting, because it's no longer, you know, they don't call it, but it would be informational, talking about it. And our meeting happened for, and I assume it'll be on the ballot for the fifth.
Refresh my memory, plowing a school?
We don't, we don't...
That has stopped this one year, right?
Has stopped, you know, this year. Core ballot is, is paid, carried over to the door.
Okay. Yep.
We are still turning around with the library parking lot, please.
I, yeah, but it's not a big deal, is it?
I wouldn't think so. Well, anything else? Anybody that we left out, if you got?
Probably, but...
Probably, yeah, yeah.
But we're meeting next week, so.
Yeah, so...
Motion to adjourn, second.
Oh, Craig?
Aye.